All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our work session for the city of Iowa City on August 17th, 2021. So welcome everyone who's with us in person. We do know that we have some of our social media sites working and other sites that aren't working to be redirected to ones that are working. Hopefully, we'll get that all solidified before definitely the formal meeting. We're gonna start out with item number two, since we're waiting for one more TRC Commissioner, so that we'll have a quorum. We're gonna start with item number two, which is Council Discussion on City Use of Johnson County MRAP, and this is a continuation of our conversation from July 27th, 2021. I know that our Chief of Police is here, Chief Liston, so I'll invite you up now.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Dustin Liston, Chief of Police. The only update I have is that there hasn't been really any movement with the county so far. I'm assuming that is what we're kind of waiting for, to see what direction they were going. I believe they have a work session later this week, and I expect maybe some, they'll be making some decisions which direction they're going, and I think that may help inform you all as to which direction you want to go with that. So, I think, Mayor, you may have had some meetings with people, so you're probably more aware of it than I am, but I'm available to answer any questions, but unfortunately, I don't have much more information than that right now. But if you want to ask specific questions about the vehicle or anything like that, I'm more than available.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Chief Liston? I do have an update. Any questions for the Chief? Okay.
Can we ask questions from here?
Actually, it's just...
Oh, just...
Yep, yep, yep. All right. The only, if there is no questions, I do have an update. Today, I did see the Bearcat, Cedar Rapids Bearcat, and the county is considering that, and I think that's gonna be coming up in their discussion. I do believe that in appearance, it is definitely very different than the MRAP, and so I anticipate by the end of this month that we will receive something, just from the information that I gathered from the sheriff. And so I think it would probably be in our best interest to delay this conversation until our next work session, if that is okay with council. The one thing that we did have, unless there is a change in positions, on the use of the MRAP, that will stay in place. We gave our chief permission to use it in extreme situations, unless someone has changed their position, that will remain in place. Okay, all right. While we're still waiting on one more Commissioner to have a quorum, we'll go ahead and do clarification of agenda items. We do have quite a few packets to go through, and if there's no clarification of agenda items, we'll start with packet July 8th, 2021. I guess I wanted to make mention that the radon and rentals are in effect now. We had to delay. Last year, they were supposed to be July 1, and so, as you see, the Iowa City is the first in the state to require radon testing and mitigation in rental homes, which is a pretty good article to read about the benefits of having that requirement. So, we have that underway now. Moving on to July 15th.
On July 15th, on the July 15th packet, just a follow-up on the fireworks. We met with the joint entities and had that discussion. At the end of that discussion, I asked that Coralville might provide their response to the fireworks in their city, in terms of calls that they responded to and citations and so forth. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't know if staff has received it, but I would just raise it again.
So we'll write that down for the City Manager's Office to follow up on that request, please, and thank you. Any other item from July 15th? July 22nd? Hearing none, July 29th?
Item IP2 about the bow hunt program. I think we'll probably need to visit that pretty soon, and I personally am not in favor of us opening it up to parks and cemeteries. I don't know what my fellow councilors feel about that.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think we're all gonna have to either speak a little bit more loudly or move the mics closer to us, because when, with people masked, it's a little bit harder to hear. I agree, Counselor Taylor.
So on this item, I mean, you can discuss it now. It's, it's an item on the info packet, so if you want to discuss what your thoughts are...
I had just heard from members of the public, and then just my own personal feelings, that I think people feel safe in cemeteries and parks, and if we have even portions of it open up to the bow hunting, that safety factor would be gone.
I just know that this has been an item on the agenda for, since 2018, and we really didn't want to do the bow hunting, but we were forced to come up with a, there was a word that they wanted changed, but a real, a clear plan of what we're, what we were gonna do, and bow hunting was one that was required. If we're talking about switching up where it's taking place, it's either neighborhoods or parks, at least from my perspective. And so, what I recall is that the City Council had great discussion here and with the public. And I think that, you know, we did the best, what we could do, to try to figure out, how do we do it? So I, and I've been hearing from people as well, and I do, I don't want to do it, but I was in opposition, as people may recall, to the bow hunting, and maybe we go there first and talk to the powers that be, but at this point, I feel like we have to, it was meaningful, a meaningful hunt. So I think that we have to move forward with the plans. I feel like we have done the due diligence in bringing up the community and the conversation.
Maybe just to clarify what exactly was in the packet, there was a memo from staff regarding the bow hunt as it was last year compared to the present year, and noting that the DNR had recommended we consider expanding the bow hunt, which is only allowed on private property of a certain size with a certain distance from residential structures and that kind of thing, and staff is not recommending that we expand to parks and cemeteries, and I agree with that recommendation. I do not think that we should.
I mean, the memo is also, in addition, in addition, the DNR recommended that the application period open earlier, and that essentially that there be a much more substantial window for people to sign up for it, but was, was, was not on the council when this went through, but my understanding is, it's basically, we had the one year of sharpshooting, and then we have to deal with four years of bow hunting, and the challenge that we face is the deer population is, is growing and is not controlled at this point.
I think staff has done the best they can do with this, given that, in general, the council did not want to have bow hunting. But we really felt strongly, we needed to do something to get control, so we approved the sharpshooting, and knew then that we had to do the four years of bow hunting. But I think, yeah, it's important to clarify that they are not recommending the hunting in public parks or cemeteries.
Any other comments on that?
I also agree that is not a good idea for the, for the cemetery.
Okay. August 5th info packet?
Included in August 5th was the memo from the Assistant City Manager on the curb ramp snow removal, and I want to thank Rachel for putting that together. It was very comprehensive analysis of what other cities in the Midwest, the Upper Midwest, are doing regarding snow removal. We also had a finding from the city attorney that, in fact, if natural snowfall should occur in the curb ramp area, that could be assigned the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. So, I think that's helpful. It's sort of, in my mind, makes it very clear what the issue is before us, and that is the unnatural snowfall that's generated by our snow plowing operations. And, Mayor, I don't know how much you want to get into this, but my position, at least at this point, and I think, you know, this is something that may require incrementalism, perhaps, might be the word, that, and they're based, these, my thoughts here are based on my own observations and discussions that I've had, and particularly in the central neighborhoods, is that the curb ramps in what I would call the walkable neighborhoods should be cleared of snow by the city. This is the area where you get the most foot traffic. It's really important, public infrastructure. You know, the pedestrian networks are heavily used in the walkable neighborhoods, and it's also the most densely populated areas where they, they tend to be, so they're widely used. Regarding the curb ramps in what I would call the more auto-dependent areas, I don't have much observation on that, so I really can't say personally to what extent it should be applied in those areas where the use of the sidewalks may be at a lower level than other parts of Iowa City. I thought there were some interesting strategies that are used in terms of prioritizing in, perhaps, say, the auto-oriented areas if there are priority streets, particular arterials or safe routes to school, whatever, whatever the case may be, where priority is given, but I, I can't say to what degree there is that need to, to clear the curb ramps in the more auto-oriented areas of Iowa City. I think, in principle, it's a good idea, but I understand that there is a cost associated with it. So at that point, at this point, that's, that's my take on that. The partnerships and crowdsourcing options discussion, I thought were interesting and worthwhile pursuing. However, I do think in, in areas such as the center of town, we should rely on a more reliable source of getting the work done. And then the last point I would make would be that the sidewalk snow removal and, the sidewalk snow removal in the walkable neighborhoods, and again, in my experience and observation, needs to be better enforced. So, you know, right now, the, the practice is more a complaint-driven process. I think we may want to consider a proactive approach by staff, because, as was noted in the memo, if, if we clear the ramps, but the sidewalks are not clear, the system breaks down. So, those, those are my thoughts. As I said, I do think, you know, many people who live in the core neighborhoods really need those curb ramps. Many people have chosen to live in the central neighborhoods because of its walkability, and the, the obstructions created by the curb ramps are, are a significant impediment during, during the winter months. My last comment would be, the memo did not cover the, the potential for, at least in my reading, of making changes to the snow plowing operations so that it may lessen the need for curb ramp snow removal, simply by trying to plow in such a way that we don't leave that residual snow in front of the curb ramps. But, you know, to the degree we can, we can approach it that way, I think that would certainly be beneficial as well.
I agree with Counselor Thomas on this, and I appreciate in the article, or the memo that we got, the distinguishing between natural versus non-natural accumulations, and I think what we're really concerned about are those non-natural accumulations, which is the snowplow. When the snowplow goes through, and having had to experience having to reshovel my driveway after the snowplow comes through, it's generally a heavier and even icier accumulation, and I think that poses a burden on the adjacent property owners that then would again have to go and shovel that area, and I think we need to maybe visit this again from a budget standpoint and see what may be, there were several options noted in there as far as college students, high school students, maybe even some private companies, that would certainly do it for a lot less than the private companies we hire to, to clear the walks that aren't cleared, so I think we do need to look at that.
I guess if we want to have further conversation on this, we would need at least three people to kind of, so they want to have further conversation, and we can put it on another agenda, if, because I know that you want some more information, just about other ways the plow on the curb, which I think we can get that information. We can ask City Manager Office to give you that information, and then if we want to have this further conversation, we can certainly do it now, or we can bring it back at a different time.
Maybe, maybe we could get the additional information, and then if that, if that doesn't, then, then at that point, I'm willing to join.
Okay. So we'll just get it in a memo from the City Manager Office. All right. Anything else from July 29th? We have two more info packets to go, and then we're gonna go over to our TRC Commissioner, so thanks for being here, and we'll be right with you in just a little bit.
I think we're on August 5th.
All right, we'll go to August 5th. Oh, we were on August 5th. I didn't make my little check mark. We have one more, and that is August 12th.
Also on August 5th, Mayor, we had the recommendation, the analysis of certain recommendations from the Community Police Review Board that our city attorney had provided. There were six of their recommendations that required further analysis to determine if they were legally possible for the city to pursue before we would be able to talk about whether we would adopt them or not. And so, from that memo, I think five of the six require legislative changes at the state level, and then, I didn't know if staff might know, did this memo also go back to the CPRB for their discussion, or what would be kind of the, the next step on these recommendations?
I would have to, I would have to go back and look to see whether it was sent directly to the CPRB or not.
I think it's copied. Yeah, it'll be in there August, oh, they had it early August meeting, their September meeting packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw in, I think it might have been the draft minutes from the most recent meeting. There was some discussion about the lawyer-social-worker issue, but I, I wasn't clear if that was prior to the analysis or not, so...
I think it was.
Okay. And that was the only issue that I, I think we could even entertain at this point. So I guess I would just ask that we bring that back after the CPRB is able to look at the analysis, if others agree?
Yep, so I think we won't get their minutes until October.
Depending on how quickly that we can get the draft done, you would possibly have draft minutes, but they don't meet, should be September 14th, I think, so, yeah, when, at the earliest case scenario, your second meeting in September.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think that's a great idea to put it back on the, put it back in a packet. Anything else from August 5th? Moving to our last info packet, August 12th? I think many of these are in our work session, so, today. If nothing else, then we will have our joint meeting with the TRC Commissioners. Welcome Commissioners, and...
Could I request that people speak loudly and clearly?
Sure.
Thanks for the reminder, folks.
Thanks for the reminder. All right. I think what we'll do is, just so that we can introduce our Commissioners, if you can just go around and just state your name.
Mohamed Traori.
Chastity Dilard.
Wangoi Godua.
Eric Harris.
Cliff Johnson.
All right. Welcome to all of you, and then for the, for your sake, I will have our Councilors introduce ourselves.
I'm Laura Burgess.
John Thomas.
Bruce Teague.
Mazahar Saleh.
Pauline Taylor.
Janice Weiner.
Susan Mims.
All right, so welcome, TRC Commissioners, and I know that there has been some conversation on your end since our last July 27th meeting, where we considered your budget, and so this is an opportunity for the Commission to speak to the Council on your budget proposal, and for the Council to also speak to you all, and hopefully, potentially give some directions or give some clarity of their thoughts. And so now, it's just an opportunity for you Commissioners to just speak to the Council.
I'd like to start by just asking if we could get concrete guidelines from you guys, or at least your thoughts on what you are looking for in a budget, or what exactly that you felt needed to be better clarified in the last proposal.
I guess I'll jump right in there. One, I want to thank you all for submitting a budget to the Council. I know that there was a lot of thought that went into, you know, the budget consideration. When I look at the budget, I think there's a few things that come to mind. One of the things is, and I'm actually going to the budget now so that I can potentially cite some things specifically, sorry, have to, have a lot of things open here. For me, I think that, you know, some of the things in the budget, as far as the expenses, I, on one level, I think there's some overlap, and maybe there's some explanation that you all can give for some of these items, and, gotta make that bigger. And the other thing is, I know that our Council, now, some of you probably didn't pay atten, were not maybe involved when the resolution was written, because there was specific conversation and language about adding audio visual of 30, I think it was 25 or $30,000, and this, you know, the, the Council said no to that amount, to that amount of money, and we stated that we would have the TRC use our city audio visual, and then if there was something special that you all needed, that you would, you know, present that to Council for consideration. So that's one thing about the budget, and then there is a, maybe I didn't understand where there is transportation for participants. There is two areas. One is, you know, where, when I look at August, it says $500, and then it says $1,000, so maybe that can be clarified. The facilitator, I do understand that the facilitator, you put out a RFP, and that came back higher than expected, and so certainly, this was before you submitted this, and we can have that discussion. When it comes down to the, the payback, I think I could appreciate you all making that request, and I do, I've talked to several of you individually, and I heard you, I want you to know that I heard you, but I, I do believe that compensation for the TRC is not appropriate, and I, I'm not supportive of that request. I do know that things in the budget, on one level, I feel that you need a facilitator so that you all can really plan what the ultimate plan is, and then, you know, maybe create some additional budget items, or revise this one and present to Council, but again, I think this is an opportunity for you all to speak to us, and, you know, give us some, some of your thoughts and rationales behind your budget.
First and foremost, on that point of the city audio visual, actually, I did meet with Vice Chair Ali, and I sent this on to our staff person, Stephanie Bowers, so, and also to media as usual, because I know that they wanted the copy, but anyways, when it comes to the advertising and outreach, we'd actually cut that item down to $3,000, because it seemed that the facilitator group in that RFP, that they would be taking care of the bulk of that, however, we wanted to allocate $3,000, $3,000 to that, just in case there were any special circumstances that they could not cover, or any unforeseen circumstances, and also just due to the fact that we do still need to interview them to formally approve them. They have only received a score high enough to be interviewed or further considered. Next, when it comes down to the videographer, we did cut that amount down to $10,000. We did receive a proposal from an interested member of the city of Iowa City, and he would like to be a part of the recording. However, we have found that in many cases, in city, state, national government, that many individuals are very distrusting of members of the government, so we are cognizant of the fact that there will be individuals that will not want to speak to us, or want to do video in a setting where they are speaking to a government official, so that is why we do have that in the budget. When it comes to the transportation for necessary participants, for public meetings or hearings, there may be individuals that have, that have experienced some of these wrongs, that may not live in the immediate area, so we do believe that that needs to remain in the budget, so that we can have them attend a meeting if needed in public, and not put that unnecessary burden on them, because if this is to be a situation where they have something substantial to include, we would not want to put an unnecessary burden on them. Next, when it comes down to the experts in training, that is something that we had essentially cut out. This is myself and the vice chair, and portioned that instead more so to the facilitators' experts. Just included that as one line item, because in that RFP, it was very well laid out in terms of the expertise that they would provide. They included line items on transportation, line items as well on community organizing. And they also put out a concrete plan on how they would like to do each phase of the project. We just have a few questions for them in terms of will any of the phases overlap? Or, or exactly when they would suspect to finish the final recommendations? As the timeline, as it had been written out, it was a little unclear. So if none of the phases overlapped, then the commission would take longer than the end of twenty twenty-two. So that's just something that I'm very wary of and would like to ask them. However, their budget proposal was just under one hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. And that is something that went far over what we had expected. We had originally wanted to allocate over the entire commission positions for a strategic project manager, facilitator expert, and also someone else to handle more of the clerical duties. But it seems that they are wanting to do all three of those things. And one thing that I did like as well is that Eduardo Gonzalez from George Mason University, who has been a very good friend to the TRC since the very beginning, and has said many things in the media as well in support of not only a stipend for the commissioners, but as well has lots of experience with TRCs worldwide. Additionally, Dr. Larry Schuler, Schuler, I believe, it is said. So helping with the Elgin Community Police Task Force, as I understand it. So oddly enough, I do know two of the individuals on that task force or involved in it. So I did ask them a little bit about him and about their task force and how it had been going. And also just wary of the fact that when it comes to that task force going on in Elgin, that there have been some situations already where their police department is actively pushing back against a task force and trying to derail it from even starting this year. So one thing I am personally wary of is that this could be a situation where we are bringing in facilitators or experts from outside of the community that are not direct stakeholders within the community, and my worry is that they will not have as much of a, as much of a personal stake in how things go after this. So for us, we would just like to make sure that there are some checks and balances within the agreement to ensure that when it comes to final recommendations, when it comes to processes, that we do truly have a voice as a commission. That's one reason that we do want to make sure we speak to them. But additionally, if that needs to be the case, that is once again more work that the commissioners will be taking on. And I do know that you have asked for us to consider more staff. But I would like to ask again if there has been any movement on bringing in any of that staff, because I have not heard of any of that yet. Additionally, when would that staff become available? How many hours would they be expected to put in? What exactly would they be expected to do? Who are they reporting to? Are they directly reporting to us, or are they directly reporting to Stephanie? Are they directly reporting to you? Next, would also just like to know, in terms of the stipends and, you know, the thoughts on why these things shouldn't be included. Is it the concrete amount or just the fact that it exists whatsoever? Because as you see, there are currently five members of the nine sitting here today. And I would like for you to ask yourselves why that may be. So some of these commissioners as well, you know, have jobs. I still myself have work to do tonight after this. And some have kids as well, so for them to leave those kids, they would have had to pay a babysitter. So that's money out of their pockets to, once again, come to this meeting that you have called. Additionally, when it comes to the fact that some have to take time off of work or an establishment that they themselves own, that is, once again, money out of their pocket and more time that they cannot spend at, at their own establishment. Additionally, when it comes to transportation, this is something that I did hear was an aspect that could be done through the city budgets. But I would just like to know if there's been any more movement on that. And next, I would just like to talk about the subcommittee budgets. So one thing that we had changed, or a few things we had changed in there, was the line on collaborators. We had just changed that to just say collaborators, and that to be from groups within the Iowa City community, such as nonprofits and youth groups, just to ensure that we had more input in the process from people that actually do live here. So looking at four thousand dollars for each of the subcommittees, just to ensure that these nonprofits and groups, when they're coming to do work with the TRC and alongside the TRC, they do receive some monetary support as that is extra time that their staff and members would have to be putting in. Next, materials.
Could I, could I interrupt for just one second? Sorry about that. So there is a new budget that you're referring to?
Just, just talking about current proposals, this is not something that TRC itself has voted on, but this is within the line items that we had originally included before.
Okay. But prior to what you're talking about now, a lot of the line items changed. Is that correct? Do you have a copy of that, or did we?
Yes. So I have sent this to Steph, I can email this to you right now as well, to the City of Iowa City email if you'd like.
I know that we, Kelly has it. We need to make sure that the, that all council has a copy of what the budget is, the revised budget is. And unfortunately, the public hasn't seen it either.
Yes. And with that as well, I did see that the item on the budget for the full council meeting tonight, I did see that. So another reason I kind of waited on sending that was I did not believe that it would be responsible to have that vote tonight after this because I do not see us coming to a concrete agreement within this timeframe, as there is much more to discuss and much more we need in terms of clarity, especially with the RFP process ongoing.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something as far as like the revised budget. I was certainly trying to take some notes as you were mentioning them, and now the subcommittee, that wasn't included in the revised budget that you mentioned?
The subcommittee budget, that was in the original budget as well, in terms of the operational budgets for the subcommittees. Just speaking on the amounts for the sub-line items for the subcommittees and how those have been changed.
All right. Now that makes sense when I was talking about there being double.
Oh, okay.
So now I see. Thank you.
Yes. So did receive some good advice from some members of the community as well on truly trying to leverage the connections we do have within the community and the other commissions and groups. So we'll be doing more of that for one, but for two, did, we do know that nonprofits and youth groups do have their own budgets, do have their own staff, but want to make sure that they are also supported. So in terms of the extra time that they may be asked to put in, did want to allocate four thousand dollars to each of the subcommittees so that when they are reaching out to these groups, if they want to be long-term collaborators throughout the process, that there is some payment for the actual work that they're doing, because do not believe anyone doing this work should be doing it for free. Next, materials and miscellaneous. If there are any items that cannot be covered within what the city is providing, do want to make sure that money is set aside, just in case that needs to be asked for. Transportation for necessary participants, if there are any subcommittee meetings in which we need the expertise or we need information from a member that is not directly in Iowa City, then we want to make sure that they are, that that is accounted for. So that is why there are two transportation line items within the budget. So the note as well in that original version is, once again, that these values are totaled, multiplied by five so as to cover the perceived operational needs of each subcommittee. So once again, the perceived operational needs. And that total now comes down to thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So we recommend that any, so this had been written in the original version, but just want to reiterate this again. So had recommended that any funds in this budget that remain unspent should be repurposed for our future budget needs. So we are aware of the fact that we do not know every sing, every single dollar, how that will all be spent, but want to remind the public and yourselves, once again, as well, that that's the case for essentially anything that happens in government. There are, essentially, every single year, a city or a government entity will either go above or below what they put into a budget. So there are many times where they may need to ask for more money, you know, looking at bonds or looking at emergency budgets, things such as that. So I think the criticism as well in terms of that we do not even know how we're going to spend all this money is unfair as well, because when we look at things such as the police department, every single year, the budgets go up and the public will ask why, but it goes up anyways. And we are once again looking at spending more money on something like a Bearcat. And, you know, there are many questions on things such as that. And with the police department and the restructuring being something that the TRC was also created to be charged with looking at, that's something else as well that we feel is not only a bit unfair, but also a bit odd that we are not directly included in that discussion. We have come to public meetings on that topic, but it is just something that I personally feel that the police department or some members of the police department should be willing to come to TRC meetings and maybe speak on something such as this. So I would like to ask for them to do so because would really like some more clarity on why exactly this Bearcat vehicle is needed. And additionally, if they have plans to get more of them, and also if there are rules of engagement for it, and what is to occur if these rule, if, if these rules of engagement are broken. Because these are many things that we do not get clarity on, even though that we routinely ask and we come to the public meetings to ask. So finally focusing back on the stipend amounts. So familiar to negotiation and also the way these things in government work of, just watched it as well in the infrastructure bill of how you had two opposing parties essentially asking for far different amounts, and one asked for a very high amount, one asked for a much lower amount, and eventually they came down and met at a certain value. So I will be completely honest, at no time did I ever expect you to agree to a full one thousand dollar stipend. But that does not mean that I do not believe that a stipend should not be given. I still do wholeheartedly believe that a stipend should be a part of the work on this commission. It is clear that it can be lower, and it should be lower as well if we do bring in the facilitator on this current RFP. But in no way do I believe that one should not exist. Because once again, there are commissioners that do have children, there are commissioners that do have other things to do outside of these meetings. And this is the first of the second meeting that we will be having this week, because we do also have our public meeting this week. So we will once, once again be downtown for that. And when it also comes to health risks that some commissioners may have to put themselves through, as you may notice, once again, not all commissioners are here. For some of the reasons as well are because of the coronavirus still going around. And they are wary of the fact that they have kids, or the fact that they have family members within their households that they want to make sure are protected, or people in other groups that they mingle with that they want to make sure are not compromised by the fact that they are going out in public for this. So I think it is not only wrong, but irresponsible to think that we should be putting ourselves in harm's way, putting our family members or friends in harm's way to continue coming out in public and to be looking to have public events or to look to have public engagement and be doing it all for free. And also to give you recommendations on what you should do based on all of the past histories and trauma and issues in how many decades or centuries in the country, state, that boil down to the city level. And for all of that to come into recommendations for you on what you should do, so that it is not something that you have to do as a part of your jobs. And to, once again, do all of that for free and to pay someone else from outside of the community that may not have as much care or as much attention to the situation as we do. With that, I yield.
I, I don't want to take all the time, but I, I did want to respond to a few things. So the hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that is for the facilitator, I still think that that remains to be seen what he'll offer to the commission. And so certainly I need to wait for that. I, I will say this. So we, July twenty-seventh, I was, after our last meeting, I was told by our chair that there will be no conversations outside of public. So I'm going to tell you how I feel because you made it very clear to me that you won't have another conversation with me outside of the public. So when it comes down to the, the statement that no one should be doing this work for free, again, I go back to the commission. Every commission on, in the city, but specifically the, this commission signed up, looked at the application and decided that they wanted to be a part of this important work. So some, what comes with that? Transportation, meetings, being stopped in the public, you know, because this is important work and people want to talk to those that are making decisions and, and having conversations. And, and it just, you just mentioned that if there are youth groups and that type stuff that is being a part, that they shouldn't do that for free? And I'm not saying that we won't pay some or we shouldn't pay some. But this broad umbrella that everybody should get paid, I am in full disagreement with that statement. And so now granted, everybody involved might get paid because it's warranted. But to go in thinking that no one should not be paid for this work, I think is not proper. And the other thing is, I, I do believe that when the, when we see the facilitator, then maybe we'll be able to make some decisions based on that. But right now, I, I, I have to be very honest, because we won't have a conversation, as you mentioned, you won't talk to me outside of public meetings. Personally, I believe that this council should really rethink and relook at what our charge is for this commission. And I also believe we need to figure out, how do we accomplish the goals? Is it through this commission? Or do we go back to the drawing board and bring the community together and tell us? So we, if the mayor can't have a private conversation with the chair of the TRC, that is problematic. It is very problematic. And personally, I really believe this council needs to rethink the charge for this TRC. I also believe we need to really start over.
I'd like to directly respond to the things that you had just said.
I'd like to respond as well, too. So after you, I'd like to respond as well, so.
So the reason I said that I would not speak to you outside of public is because it seems like the two meetings that we had that led to work sessions, you know, having the full conversation the night before of, yes, just want to get your thoughts, what you're expecting to occur, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Once again, that is more of my time taken, and I pour my heart and my soul out in those talks. And then I come to the meeting, and I, once again, pour out my heart and soul. Just to be stifled yet again, just to be pushed back yet again. And it is not only embarrassing, but it is not something I want to continue to go through. So I can speak to you outside of the public, but I would just like to ask that when it comes to the public meetings, please do not misrepresent the work that this commission does. Because the, the thing that really got to me in the last meeting was when we were accused of not even doing anything that we were charged with. Which once again would be very clear to all seven members of city council if you did all actually have a stake in this commission. And thank you, Councilor Burgess, for coming to meetings. Because we did also have multiple members of the council admit at the last public meeting that they do not pay as much attention to the commission as they should. So why should I feel that it is necessary for me to continue reaching out and calling if you don't even show that you have a stake in it? Because that is something that we are all a part of, and it is something we heavily care about. So show us that you do as well. So if you don't even care about this commission as it stands, I wonder, when you go back to the drawing board, will you care enough about the next solution you come up with? Or can I even call it a solution? Because will it even be seen through to the end?
I do want to make a point, which I brought up that night, that when I called you about the meeting, it was really to give you what to expect in a meeting, because it was your first time coming, to talk to this body as the TRC representative. And I was going to call you up to talk, so I, I was talking about procedural things. Any content to the budget? The only thing I stated was there could be several ways this will go. Counsel can improve it, counsel can delay it, or counsel can change it. So I wanted you to be aware that those are the things that could happen. Outside of that, my conversation was over. There was anything that you offered, you offered, and I just listened. I didn't have anything else to offer. So. I, I'm not, and, and I didn't lead you on with any conversation. I just essentially told you procedure. But again, I don't believe that, you know, that position. Maybe you misunderstood me or how that conversation went. But it was very clear to me that it was only procedural that I gave you. That was it.
So are our conversations only going to be procedural? Because if that's all our conversations are going to be, then I don't see a need.
The conversation that day was procedural of what you can expect. I would call you up and you'll be able to present. That was procedural. I reached out to make sure that you were aware of what was gonna happen. I didn't want you to come here and, and think something different.
I was well aware of what was going to occur before it occurred, just like the first time when the T R C pause had occurred. And when you had called me that time. Within, within two minutes of the conversation even starting, I told you point blank on the phone. It does not matter what I say on this phone call. I already know what you guys are going to do. You're going to pause the commission because I'm not as naive as many of you would like to think. And it is very clear what the decisions are going to be before they are even made. And that's all I have to say and I would like to give it over to Eric.
Okay, um, so first of all, I would address what the mayor said. And you said this word a couple of times in your first presentation. It sounds like it's a personal thing with you. Because he doesn't want to have conversations outside of the public. And you said you took it personally. You, you used that word a few times. So that, you know, it's no denying that, you know, the evidence is great right there that you took it personally. That he didn't want to talk to you if it wasn't a public forum. So that's pretty evident. So I just wanted to address that part. Another thing that I'm gonna say that I'm gonna say personally, and this is from my own personal feelings and about the T R C. I've been downtown in Iowa City today. Cause I heard the people talk about like, what does the T R C do? What do they do outside of their meetings? Do they do anything? I've been down here since about 11:45. All about T R C things, things that we sponsor, things that we got going on, things that we, groups that we affiliate with. The excluded workers coalition. I've been down here since about 11:45 today. You know, dealing with things like that because of things that don't have anything to do with the city council. But with the government of Iowa illegally taking people's unemployment benefits when there's evictions looming and things like that. So that's the things that the T R C does. Um, other T R C members have been in attendance plenty of times with me in other events outside of just a Thursday T R C meeting. On average, I may spend four or five hours out of my day, whether it's responding to emails, whether it's going to different events, whether it's talking with my fellow members or things like that. And what do you think that I have to find to do with my kids during that time? What do you think that like right now it's dinner time? And when we're done with this discussion, I have to go take a break and go outside and call my 17 year old son and sell him some food to prepare. And for the, for the rest of my children who are under 12 years old. Um, we, we, we spend time in here talking about a Bearcat. Which is a, it's a lesser tool of war, but it costs $200,000. The work that the T R C does is really critical at this point right now. We're working with the scooter workers. We're working with lots of different things that we, that we got going on. And when we get our facilitator, we're gonna be working on more things. So. You take four or five hours, six hours at times, or sometimes when we were on Zoom calls, it would be four and five hours Zoom calls. And when you have children, see how much that takes out your day. See if you can maintain that plus your regular job, plus other things that you may do. Plus work you might have to do around your house. But yet and still, you know, we talk about Bearcats, another tool of war. That costs $200,000. I don't care if it's smaller than the N R A P. It's still a tool of war. Or, you know, no offense to no council members, but we talk about snow removal, fireworks. But not the people that's doing the important work in this city. And with that, I yield.
I do want to make it clear that in no way do I hold ill will towards any of you.
Nope.
Or I do not mean any of my comments in complete disrespect. I do not disrespect any of you. I'm just being completely honest in terms of how I feel and how I see these things. So I want to make sure that that is clear once again. So that narrative cannot be twisted as it was in the past. I'm not a hateful person, never have been, never will be. This is just once again, me being honest in terms of what I have seen thus far.
And I would also like to add, we still have one hardworking, the only one that we have, staff member Stephanie. Where we gonna get the rest of our staff to help us out? We've been doing this through the whole pandemic on our own with one staff member. I'm a yield.
I'll take the floor if I'm allowed.
Absolutely.
I remember in one of the city council listening post last year in September. That time I was in charge with the, I didn't volunteer to work as a commissioner in the T R C. That time we didn't have it yet. And I remember asking the council that we need to do better as far as ratio inequity is concerned. And of course, having the fear, having been a member of my beloved city of Iowa City and bringing up my children since 2002. And especially for my son and my ex-husband, always even today, having to cry. Because anytime they go around my beloved city, are they gonna be dead? And I've been known to be dramatic, my children say so. But black mothers living in the U S, they know that that is not dramatic. So I asked the council. As I sit here or if somebody goes looks at my vita, they will see whom I am. And sometimes things like my education will mitigate my relationship with somebody who is white. But while I am driving on Iowa City under traffic stop, I am a, a black body. And so is my ex-husband, so are my two sons. So that fear is very real and it's not dramatic. It has happened since the first black body alive, arrived in the U S A. Now that being said, which I shared at that time is what keeps me joining every day. Any cause that is to make that better. And I did address the mayor directly and ask him. As we continue doing this work and I want us to keep thinking about this as we move forward. Whatever we arrive at, as we continue moving, making our Iowa City better. And as we improve ratio equity in our city. Are we checking a box? Or are we serious? As the city council, as we do this? And one of the things, I'll refer to something that Commissioner Harris has asked. Was the T R C set up by not having information on the city council charging us with the work? Who they have been lucky to serve on the Human Rights Commission? And we had a lot of the city mechanisms that were doing a lot of the work that the, the T R C is doing. I want to be corrected on that because we really do not have information. We don't have a comparison of the other commissions. What do they have and boards and what is the ad hoc T R C having? So as we move on, let us ask ourselves that question. As the city council, because the T R C is charged with the work that the city council is doing. We are part of that or, or is that so? Or is it a punching bag? Was it work that, was it to check a box, diffuse the situation that was there last summer? And at the same time, to be pointed at, we are doing this. We are doing this, but they're failing, the T R C is not doing it. As we move on from here, or are we working together to make our city better? For my two sons and their children and all our children. And when I talk of just my sons, it's not just my sons. It's for all of us because if one of us suffers and the least of us, we all suffer. I yield.
I have a question. I was just wondering, uh, what, uh, what's your ideal way for things to be handled for the T R C? Mr. Mayor.
You're asking me specific?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Actually, that was a question or, or a related question that was asked of me. After the last meeting. Again, I think the short answer, because I wanted to definitely allow more conversation to be had. I think the short answer would be it needs to be relooked at from my perspective and have multiple people give their thoughts.
Uh, I was wondering what was your, uh, when it comes down to relook that, what do you mean by relook that exactly?
I think in how do we achieve the charges of the T R C? Because that's so important to me that we not check a box, that we do it in unity as much as we can. We know that there has been some hurt by amongst the T R C, amongst our own people. And so how do we move forward? There could, it, I think potentially the best way to move forward in unity is to restructure.
Does that mean dismantle the current T R C?
It could.
I'm gonna have to speak. Yep, I don't, um, I'm gonna have to speak real quick. I don't agree with you because we already went through that process. The people that needed to be removed from the T R C have been removed or left the T R C. And I'm talking about people who made inappropriate comments, who did inappropriate behavior, which I'm sorry that they did that. And I heard a council member say that one of those people was removed, a good person that was removed from the T R C. No, that person delayed the T R C. That person made inappropriate comments to the public after a T R C meeting. And that person continues to talk bad about the T R C on social media. It is morally bankrupt that that person continues to do that. It's not about, you know, financial things. Some people are just morally bankrupt. And that person that I'm talking about is a Johnson County supervisor. So just so anybody know, and it's going to be the second one that I have to call out this week for inappropriate behavior. With that, I'm a yield.
I, I don't want to get into a match here, but.
Yeah.
I have to tell you how I'm, how disappointed I was in, within our T R C. How embarrassed I was within our T R C as a, a black person. And how divisive that everyone played a part. Okay? So. Uh, the person you're referring to is a pillar in our community, is a uniter in our community. And the actions that was done towards her, totally unacceptable.
That's what the problem is because it's the bias of that feeling. You, how many meetings did you attend when she was cursing in the meetings, calling up people after the meetings, cursing them out? How many meetings were you there for that behavior? When we asked her to have a hearing about her inappropriate behavior? She disrupted the whole meeting with profanity and resigned before we can even take a vote.
Okay, I, what I do know is that we're not on topic. I'm sorry about that.
That's my fault. Yeah, yeah, if you want to have, we can talk about that later because I talked to you outside of public. It don't matter to me. I'm not, you know, I, I'm me. So.
Well, let's bring it back to the, to the focus.
Sorry, uh, I just wanted to chime in. We've had such a lovely discussion. As a new T R C, a T R C member, I would just like to say my experience, um, it's just felt really disorganized. I do not feel support from the city council. I feel like you set us up for failure. I feel like coming into this situation, most of us are new. So as my fellow commissioner, Wangui said, we don't have the same supports as other commissions do. We don't have to talk about the stipend situation, but that stems from that. You're asking us to do a lot with no direction. So that's really frustrating. Also, um, if we, if we jump into that, not knowing anything, and it seems like maybe none of you understand what T R C is. When we got the R F P and realized this is what, this is all the different things that could be done that we could have had beforehand, um, to get into that and, and then to hear that, that's just frustrating all over. Like this whole commission has been set up for failure. If you really care about it, you're not showing it. And that's just all I, that's how I feel.
I really would like to start with acknowledging all the hard work that everyone here does. And, but that's also the other commissioners are doing, like in another commissions, also they're doing the same thing that you guys do. For me, I really don't see a difference because you, yes, you are doing hard work. You leave your children, you come here, you, as you said, some of the commissioners are not here today because they are working. I've been in the same shoes when I was in, uh, you know, when I was in the C P R B, the police review board. At that time I was working at Brockton Gamble. And I was studying at Kirkwood Community College. I have five children and I, I was low income, living in low income housing. I was doing this completely for free because when I have life for it, I knew it's for free. And it is volunteer. And I would like just to give to my city and like volunteer to the city that I love. You know, I, I don't mind if I said, yes, we're gonna bear you guys because you are doing a lot of work and you are spending a lot of time. I've been reached out by three different commissioners who are in different, like another commissions. They are low income. One of them, she lost her job during the pandemic. She received unemployment. And now after the, you know, the governor stopped the unemployment, she's now without work. And she, she doesn't have any income. And she's looking for a job during the pandemic and she couldn't find anything. And she told me that if you guys gonna bear commissioner, bear me too. That means people like you who are really, you know, low income, maybe they are, they have children. They don't make enough and they spend a lot of time in this. There is many, many people like you in another commission. What we gonna do? Are we gonna bear all the commission in any other commission? I, I really understand, we know what the job that you do and what even waiting for you to do. There is many work that we are hoping and many thing that we are hoping you like do it and work on it. I understand that, but planning and zoning, they doing, they bring a lot of hours in their commission. C P R B, I was one of them. We look at hours of videos, different cameras and, and reading like the police report and everything. This is, I just believe that we have to acknowledge all the other commission who are really volunteering. They're doing as much as you guys doing. They have children, they take transportation, they spend a lot of time reviewing documents and doing a lot of thing. That's why I really cannot support stipends unless it's for all commission. Not only like just this commission. Because it's not fair. I know a lot of people, I told you three people reached out to me and they said they need also to be, get paid. So it's not, what is not fair to me is not fair to everyone. Like if I, if we said yes for stipends for this commission, we have to say yes for everyone. That's why for now, because I know we don't have budget for every commissioner in the city to get paid. We have a lot of commissions, over 20 something commission. That's why I'm not gonna support this. And I understand that. And you understand that when you sign up for this, you knew this is for free and this is volunteer. That's the only thing really, uh, you know, make me not support this because it's not fair for the other people. That I know they are low income minority, been over five years doing the same thing. They are without job right now. And it's not fair. That's why I'm not gonna support it.
Those commissions, um, don't have a deadline and those commission have one, more than one staff member.
No.
And I will point that out.
No, that's not true. No, that's not true.
Well, what I would just like to say is I think it's honestly very, very hurtful to hear that those individuals are going through that. My heart does go out to them. But I just want to add as well that at no time did we say that we do not believe other commission, other commissioners on other commissions should be paid. At no time have we said that. I think the true question is, why do all of those commissioners do all of that work for free? Because the way I think about it, when it comes to labor that supports the city, that supports the government, why should that work continually be done for free? Because if you do retain good individuals by making sure they are truly rewarded for the work that they do, then don't they continue to do good work and don't you have better outcomes? I mean, you are with the Center for Worker Justice and I believe that is a pillar that your group heavily believes in. So for me, I think that makes sense. And I think part of your argument was essentially arguing in agreement of that. So I think it is something that should be looked at. And to say that we don't have the budget for it, I don't know that that's necessarily completely true either. There can be a budget for it. Those requests can be made. Maybe they just haven't been looked at enough. I mean, again, last month, what was it, like $150,000 for someone to look at what you're going to do with recreation? And then that's going to have to go through another process of you then approving it and then probably some planning and zoning and other commissions having to be involved. So paying that group $150,000 for other commissions to then have to relook at it for then you to get paid. So the only people that got paid out of that situation were the contractors and yourselves. But there are others in the middle that don't, that still have to be a part of it. So to me, that is not worker justice. So I just think that there is a lot of aspects missing in there. And that's part of the point here of that maybe that old normal that we were adhering to was not correct. And maybe it is time to look at things differently. Because I think this was said in the last meeting, but this is something I believe as well. Just because you didn't have something, doesn't mean that others shouldn't. The point should be progress. I mean, the country that we live in, the point of this country is progress, moving forward. This democratic republic, this idea of what the United States was, that was thought of as crazy, right? But it was progress and we continue to progress going forward. I mean, I do heavily believe in this as well. Because if I was someone that didn't believe in, I mean, if my own dad was a person that thought, hey, I didn't have this, so you shouldn't, I would still be living in a mud hut village in Africa.
You do know that there are lots of people that volunteer hours for a lot of not-for-profits that work night and day and do not get a single penny and don't even want one.
No, not because
That's great for them and I commend them for that. But again, if they don't want a single dollar, that is their choice.
Right, and if, and if you want to get paid, you go get a job that pay you.
I do have a job that pays me.
This one does not pay.
I want to change this.
On the budget issue, I would, I would really like to get back to focusing on the budget proposal and the, and the, and the overall budget issue, if that's possible. My confusion right now is, is that the, the numbers that I am seeing in front of me on what we were, were given don't align with the numbers that you were talking about. So again, I wrote, I wrote those down as we were going. But the, you've asked about staff and you've asked about purpose. It has struck me, it is, it has been my sense since the very beginning of this that, that a facilitator or a facilitator group that has appropriate experience, that has the researchers and has the staffers to help expand on what Stephanie Bowers has been doing, is probably the, the best, the absolute best support for the commission. I'm hoping that you can go, that, that you can make the contact and go, and that go through with this RFP. I don't know what the ultimate, what the ultimate cost would be. But to me, that is probably the most worthwhile expenditure that, that you all can put into your budget. If you can truly be supported by people who we as a city have no experience with TRCs. I, I admit that fully. But the people who have applied for this, this, through this RFP do, as, as I believe your chair noted, Eduardo Gonzalez has, has worked with multiple, multiple TRCs around the world and in this country. He works with a group whose goal is to help TRCs around the country. And my sense is that they have not been any, the less engaged and involved simply because they were not, they didn't live exactly where it was, where, where those TRCs were taking place. They, that, that's their whole raison d'etre. So if I, you know, I don't, in the end, I don't know what the rest of the budget is going to look like. But that has to be, for me, that has to be the centerpiece getting, and that can, that, that would be your main support and your, and probably your main staffing and probably, and I, from my perspective, probably worth every single penny. And I would also add that I'm supportive of transportation money. I'm supportive of babysitting money, of sitting money. Because those are real expenses that, that allow, that will allow people to participate in, in commissions and, and other things. That's, that, those are issues being fought out in Washington and in state houses all over the country. And, and those sort, those sorts of expenses I'm completely supportive of.
I also support those, I'm sorry, but I forget to say that. I'm also supporting for childcare and transportation because yeah, you need to, you know, to, it happened to me once, I was trying to come in, I couldn't find even somebody to babysitter my kids. And if I start paying to come and do volunteer job, this is going to cost me money. So I agree, you know, for the transportation and babysitting budget, I support that.
Thank you, Councilor Weiner and Mayor Potem. I, I wanted to just mention to Chair Troyer, thank you for your comment about not feeling any ill will or disrespect. I'd like to speak for the rest of my council members. I, I'm, we also do not feel any ill will or disrespect. Quite the contrary, at the time of your appointments, we had great respect for you. I was amazed at the quality of the applicants that we received. And it was somewhat difficult even to select the few, and I was glad we expanded the number, to sit on this very important commission because we did believe it was important. And the comment about no direction, and perhaps we were guilty of that at the beginning. But in the first few months, a facilitator, we keep, we forget about this. A facilitator was hired, Jesse Case was hired and was there for just a few months. And now it's been how many months and you've been without? That was what the intent of the facilitator was, to help you with that guidance and direction. And here we are, still months later, still talking about, and I understand with the RFP, but hopefully we can speed that process up and, and that will help you. And Councilor Weiner and, and others had mentioned these outside people from Ohio, is it? And
The current group is, I think, based out of Virginia.
Virginia that are helpful. And those are resources that can help you also. It doesn't necessarily have to be the staff member, although you have Stephanie, who's an excellent person, an excellent resource. So I think those kinds of things. And there was mention about if you have a paid person, but they perhaps don't have any ownership in the community. But so it is, it will be important to have people that truly believe in the intent of, of the commission and where you want to go and what you need to do. And I myself would like to be helpful to, with you to, to get that direction and, and, and get your meetings progressing and, and accomplish things. I, I would like to see that.
I have a bit of a general question again. Is it the pay or is the performance that would break the TRC up?
I forgot to mention that, that at the time that we did appoint you all, and that's been over a year ago. And in that time, there was never any assumption made about compensation to sit on the commission. Nothing ever had been said, not from the beginning and not until just recently with your budget proposal. So that's why I have some concerns about that.
I just want to clarify a few things. So for one, Jesse Case was not with us for a few months. He actually never signed his contract. I know you guys approved it, but he never signed it. Additionally, we want to say that the expectation of, of a stipend or any type of compensation, I never had one either. But as I said in the last meeting that we were here, that idea did not originally come from myself or anyone else on the commission. That idea was originally given by Jesse Case himself in one of our public meetings. The same man whose contract you approved. That is the only time I began thinking about it. And then after looking at the history of more TRCs, seeing that same recurring theme. And also Eduardo Gonzalez, who is going to be brought in as a part of Kerns and West, if that is approved, he as well, when asked about it in the media, agreed. So I just keep seeing these things just tying back into one another of the people that are in the leadership that actually have a true stake in the TRC. When the person whose contract you approved, that's how the whole stipend thing started. This is not just our idea and how that came about. Once again, this was from Jesse Case. So I don't get why we're being made out to be the bad guys on this, as if this has never happened before with the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And as if we're saying that Truth and Reconciliation Commissions are the same thing as all other city commissions because they truly are not. You even put the word ad hoc in front of it. It is not the same thing and it is unfair to say so. There is no disrespect again to the other commissions, but they are not the same thing. And in terms of the amount of time that is put in, there is a time where I even asked them if, could we do the monthly meetings? So we could have more time for subcommittees, more time to get out in the communities? And it was agreed that no, we have to do the biweekly because of the amount of work that is needed, the amount of follow-up that is needed. So we do know that that time commitment needs to remain, facilitator or not. And yes, this is something we have heavily looked at. I mean, the proposal in itself was like 60 pages. So again, that was more time that we had to take out of our lives to review that entire proposal. And that is not easy. So I don't get why all of that work is expected to continually be done for free. I mean, for me, for work, you said to get a job. I mean, I do have one and I worked very hard to get it. I mean, I taught myself the skills that I needed to get it. And with that job in the last three weeks, because we do international things, I've essentially been working in multiple time zones, which is why I said that I have work to do tonight. Because I have people in Asia that I still have to speak to later tonight. So when we have these proposals and things of that nature and these extra meetings, it's pretty taxing. I mean, if I were to show you my sleep schedule from the last five, six months, you'd see how broken up it is in that I don't average more than four and a half hours of sleep any night during the week. I catch up with naps in here and there on the weekends because there's still more to do. So I do take it very, very seriously, to the point that it took me so long to decide that if I wanted to join this, that it wasn't until literally the very last minute, the last literal minute, that you could send in an application that I sent mine in. I thought about it that hard. Do I want to put my time into this? Do I think I can actually contribute to this? Do I think that we can make this a success? And I do still think that that can happen. I just want to make sure that the contributions of everyone on this commission are truly seen as contributions that matter because they do. And that we aren't just going to scrap this once again and act as if everything that has been done was all for naught.
I really respect what you said, but just keep in mind, they are not alone. There is a lot of people doing the same thing. You know how many commissioner, they, they, they join the city commissioner at the same time, they are volunteering in nonprofit organizations. And you know, like also they don't have even time to sleep. I personally know those people. You know, I can, I, I can, I being, you mentioned the Center for Worker Justice earlier. I've been volunteering at the Center for Worker Justice while I was living in a low income housing. I was volunteering for five years for free and I was in the commission as the city. And I don't, when I go home, I don't even have time to sleep. So I understand what you're coming from exactly, but this is how it is from day one. You know, this is was no payment for it as a volunteer and you choose. Like it's not like forcing somebody or appointing somebody, thus you choose voluntarily to join. That, that's what it is. But you know, look at the other commissioners, they, they volunteer somewhere else and they do great job in this community. And all of it like volunteer.
If every single member of the TRC hypothetically were to be gone, who would you expect to take all of, all nine positions and actually do this work?
I really don't know, but there is some people out there I will come and join.
Nine in total?
How many people apply for this? And there is many application when we choose you. There is many people online, but you know, I guess when I told you that this is, was like this from the beginning. And what is not fair for, for the others, you know, for you, if I, if we pay you, we have to pay everyone. And this is not something that we have to discuss right now. Because if we're going to say, okay, as you said early, we have to pay all the commission. No one should work for free. Then this is a big like thing that we have to go and discuss because this has not only become about the TRC, this has become about all commission.
Right, that's what you should do about that.
I mean, that statement in itself, I, I just want to keep this concise so we can just move on to what we can actually agree on. That statement in itself that no one should work for free, of course I believe that. I mean, those words in itself, no one should work for free. Like, I hope everyone believes that. I mean, this is a capitalist society. Like hopefully you are not looking to work for free. Anyways, what do we actually agree on? So it sounds like the facilitator aspect. So if it were to come in for that $198,000 to $200,000, that is something that you would be okay with?
Personally, I'm not going to be okay with because 198 is too much for that.
That's, that's what they asked for and that's the only RFP that came in.
So I just wanted, can I just jump in real quick? Just clarifying that, it's not just one person. This is an expert, a team of experts that are going to come and do it. If you're not going to pay us to do it, why wouldn't you pay the team of experts to do it? That's all I have to say. So to say that you're not going to do one or the other is, that's ridiculous.
I, I do, please.
I think that's a great point. And, and I want to go back to what Councilor Weiner said. I think where I'm at is I am not supportive of the stipends. I am totally supportive of getting you the staff and support that you need through, whether through this RFP or any other process that we need to do. Because I totally agree, there is too much work for commission members to do on their own. When we look at our other commissions, they have, depending on the particular commission, there are multiple staff members doing background work. There may be one staff member that is a liaison, but there's other city staff members that are doing a lot of that background work. So I totally agree that you need support and staff. I really like the idea of professional organizations that have experience. You asked the question, would we support this RFP? I need to see the details. I would not say no.
64 pages, so I hope you all look at it soon.
I will. But I, I mean, like you said, it's not just one person. It's an organization, it is people who are professional, who have experience. And if that's what they're bringing to the table and the time commitment that is necessary to give you the support you need to do the work that needs to be done, to gather information, et cetera, I will definitely give it very, very serious consideration. The number itself does not scare me. Okay, that, that doesn't scare me if it gets you to where you need to be to do the work. So that's the approach that I like. I, I am not at a position that I want to start over, rethink, anything like that. I think by getting the support in place that you need, then hopefully we can move forward. I'm not supportive of the stipend. I am supportive, and I would be supportive of this for any other commission, is looking at, because I do think we, I do feel important that there's some consistency in childcare expenses and looking at travel expenses if necessary as well. So more than willing to look at those. I think a comment was made about being paid for what you do. Yes, I agree with that, but I also agree, there is a huge part of our society that is built on and benefits significantly from volunteerism. And I think that's really, really important. I spent three years on school board, you don't get paid. Okay? Our school board members do incredible work. We have all of our commission members, et cetera. We have you who have volunteered for this. And I think that sense of volunteerism is also really, really important. But it is absolutely essential that volunteers have the support that they need so that they can be effective with their time and their expertise and their commitment.
I just want to add a couple of comments. You know, I'm building on what, what I've heard here. I, I too think the facilitator, which I, we did talk about this at our last meeting on the 27th, that I've almost really think the name facilitator may not be the most accurate way of describing the role this consultant will be playing. I, I tend to view it more as a project or program manager who has a much more comprehensive role than just simply facilitating. I think that's the, the key next step is having that, that position filled. As, as Susan just mentioned, I, I have no, no trouble with, with what they may be proposing as their fee for that. They are, in a sense, going to provide you with that staff support, which is necessary to come from the outside, because it's not an area that anyone on our current staff has that much experience with. I mean, you're going to have to bring in someone with that special expertise that's required for producing a truth and reconciliation process. I, I would ask in terms of the budget proposal, and I mentioned this at our last meeting as well, uh, in my mind, the budget needs to be tied to, to a plan. What is, what is the plan from now until the report is due, uh, what I think May 1st, at least currently? So it's tied to a schedule, it's tied to a series of tasks that need to be completed in a certain sequence, each of which may have a cost associated with them. So the, the budget is tied to a plan. It's tied to a scope of work, duties are assigned, you know, what is the duty of your commission? I think the greatest problem that I see has been that you, you were working in a vacuum, you didn't have, other than Stephanie, support from staff, and yet you also didn't have a, a program manager in place to provide that structure, which really staff couldn't provide anyway. So you, you're kind of in a suspension, and in that suspension, filled it with the realization, we're going to have to do the work, we don't have that support in place. I would hope that will change with having a program manager, dramatically change. And so your role will change as a consequence of that. I would, I would see your roles transforming into what is a more conventional commission role, uh, which is setting agendas, approving the, the material that is developed by the program manager and so forth. So you're, you're not doing the work, you're approving the work. You know, it's, it's a different, uh, role, and you're also representing the process. You're the public face on the process, that's important. So, you know, this, this selection of the, the consultant is absolutely essential. I would hope it also, in terms of the budget, goes right to the end of the process. I know we're sort of talking about a budget through December. I think it would be helpful to see the budget for the entire process. You know, you can break it down into, you know, from now to December, but I think I would find it more useful to understand how that fits into the, the full picture.
I have to agree with that last point, but again, that's just one thing that we need to talk to this group about, because of the way that their phases had overlapped in some cases and not overlapped in others. Not entirely sure when they would expect to have the final report done. So it is difficult to have that entire process out. So also in terms of the comment, in having it tied to a schedule or in terms of different wants or needs, I did spend the bulk of, you know, the entire first portion that I spoke, really elaborating on that, not only this time, but last time I was here, and just further elaborated on it once again. And then also did raise the point that other groups that have budgets talk about how, you know, this is going to be used for this, but may not even use it for that, or may not even use the amount at all. And also would like to raise the point that when this commission was created, there was $1 million that you all had allocated towards Black Lives Matters things and TRC. And again, in terms of having a direction, a scope and everything, is there any clarity on that yet from all of you, or is that just an allocation? Because that's just the point, again, of, that's a bit of an arbitrary standard being applied on us, even though I'm still continually telling you what we are expecting every line item to be used on. So I don't know how, how that can be any more clear. Do I have to have every single bullet point of what will be done at a public hearing? Do I have to see into the future and know that? Knowing that this process could easily change, or the facilitator and their group could easily decide that, hey, a different approach needs to be taken here or there. So how can I have that entire thing out for you? Cannot tell the future. So I'm giving you what I do have based on what I do know. And I feel that that, it has been spelled out as well as possible.
We're getting close to the end of our time, and I just want to make sure you all hear that I think we need to stick with the current commission. I'm support of the members who, I'm supportive of the members who we appointed, and I think I, as far as what we agree on, what I've heard from both sides of the table today repeatedly is the move, the words, move forward. We want to move forward and we want to do it together. As the mayor acknowledged, there's hurt, there's been a lot of discomfort and distress, and we will get past that, it's going to take additional work, it's going to take additional time. But I think having the facilitator, having someone who can provide the expertise to help formulate the work plan so that we can have the budget at a detail that you are not in a position to provide us right now. You, you just really cannot do that, and order of operations wise, we've required you to do that. We've said you need to come to us with a budget, but you don't yet have someone to provide that support to make it maybe something more, um, fleshed out than it is at this point in time. And I think, you know, we, we could spend all day talking about why that happened and, you know, what, what happened in the past, but I do watch your meetings, I do listen, and I know that you're forward-looking, and I think we are too. I think we are committed to this, it is not just checking a box. The amount of the facilitator is not troubling to me more because of that million dollars and the fact that we have not taken the time to allocate that towards, um, anything else. And so I think that, you know, if we take one-fifth of that essentially towards a professional team of experts to support you in this work, just at, you know, at this level with needing to look at the proposal, as Councilor Memm said, seems very reasonable. I think we might be closer to the same page than we're willing to acknowledge on the stipend question as well. If we're talking about supporting, uh, the ability of commissioners, yours and others, to attend with support for childcare, for transportation, I would add food to that when you're at a night meeting for six hours, considering that, that does sound like a stipend to me. And we don't have the amount nailed down, we don't know what criteria could be involved in that, and would certainly need to map that out, and it would have budget implications for the city wider than just your commission. But I think, again, we may be closer to that than we're willing to acknowledge. So I just, I hope we will continue, um, this conversation after, as I understand, order of operations, you all, uh, are going to talk with the facilitator and then maybe make that recommendation, I assume would come back to us in the form of approval of that contract. So I hope that that's the path that we can, can continue down.
I'll jump in with tying in a lot of words that kept on coming back, as especially when we were discussing stipend, and I'm glad, Councilor Burgas, that you've brought it back. The word is either stipend or some sort of allowance, just like, um, I'm from academe, and we usually have teaching assistants or graduate assistants, they have a stipend, because really, what they bring in is much more than the, or a word like compensation. But now when it goes to payment, if you looked at the, you looked at the, if you looked at the veters or resumes or whichever word you want to put on the people who are on the commission, really, that would be a totally different discussion on what they're bringing in, even what is not really tangible. The, the other word we kept on using is equality, the other commissions and the other boards. We, as we move forward, let's remind ourselves, uh, equality is not always equity. And right now, the TRC work, right from the very foundation, it's about ratio inequity, which we are attempting to make our city better on that. So let's remind ourselves, and as we think and look in, yes, it's a commission, but already, like somebody pointed out, there's the word ad hoc, there is a timeframe. So those are just a few things. So if we talk of, it's the same work, is it? So let's remember, equality is not equity as we move forward, and the ma, and I'm underlining and uppercasing move forward. Thank you, I yield.
Yes, I want to thank the TRC commissioners for being here today. We have actually reached the end of our time here, um, at this meeting. I did want to make one last comment, just for legal, to potentially look at or, um, maybe give the TRC commissioners at one of their meetings some, some guidance. I don't know if in-person meetings, if it were to be required of TRCs, what options they would have if they have someone that's not local, but I do think that's something to consider. The other thing is, I know that, um, Councilor Thomas mentioned, um, you know, the TRC commissioners would not be doing the work, but more approving the work. So if, if the facilitator, I think this is something you all need to inquire with your facilitator, um, you know, what are their in-person options, what are their in-person legwork throughout the community? I think that's something for you to consider. At this point, unless there's anything else, um, I think we'll be adjourned into our 6:00 PM formal meeting.
Can I say one more thing? I just want to share the same sentiment that the other members, there's no hard feelings. Um, this is a, this is something that we have to debate and talk about, and there's definitely no hard feelings, um, so I just want to echo that call that I heard. And also, I agree with the counselor here, um, I'm not, um, it's Councilor Weiner, um, I agree, the transportation costs and the food costs and the childcare costs, um, I'm not looking for a salary, but those things need to be covered at some point, you know? I'm not looking for, you know, even the amount, you know, I had, you know, I listened from the last meeting where people broke down, this is how much you're going to make an hour? Well, even if that's enough to cover those expenses, I'm not looking for a salary. Like, that amount is just an amount that was just threw out there and it's out there for debate.
Thank you so much.
I just want to add one more thing too. I didn't join this at all for pay, in no way, shape or form. But I have noticed a lot of people doing a lot of hard work, however we can take care of them, I feel like is the best way to do it, whatever way we can. I definitely agree with the childcare and food and transportation, I just feel like that is the, I mean, bare minimum we could do for people who are doing their best for their community out there. I, I just, I support it wholeheartedly, so. I, when it comes down to pay myself, I mean, like I said, I didn't expect it, wasn't expecting it, still don't expect it. However, I, I think we need to recognize how hard people are working, and there are a lot of people working hard, I think we need to recognize that too and make changes. That's what progression is all about. Let's try to move forward, to move things in that direction where we do take care of people who are taking care of the community. There's a lot of people out there who don't care at all, and they just go about their life, but those who step up, let's take care of them, that's all.
Again, thank you all commissioners for being here today, and we will be adjourned until 6:00 PM.